Good evening. This is the mayor and commissioners meeting for the town of Rising Sun on August 10th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. And first, we have the call to order and roll call.
Commissioner Braun?
Here.
Commissioner Shepard?
Here.
Commissioner Pearson?
Here.
Commissioner Warren.
Here.
Let... The record show that we do have a call.
Thank you. So, the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In lieu of a parrot, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Ella French of the Chicago PD and the other 195 officers killed in line of duty this year, and all those that put their lives in danger every day for us, for our freedoms, both domestic and abroad. So, it looks like we have no public presentation? Okay. Or do you want to?
If I can.
You want to do it now? Okay, let's do the public presentation now.
Good evening, commissioners and Mr. Vice Mayor, or Mrs. Vice Mayor, I'm not sure who it is these days. As you all know, trying to hire and retain police officers has become a very tedious task nowadays, a very difficult task. So, it's extremely special when you can hire a police officer, retain them, and be proud of the work that they've done. Approximately three years ago, we hired William Townsend as a patrolman for the town of Rising Sun. Over those past three years, he has served the citizens of the state of Maryland, the town of Rising Sun, and the county with great honor. So, as a result of his tenure with the town, his hard work, he is now being promoted to the rank of patrolman first class. So, Officer Townsend, can you rise for me, please?
Sir. Thank you personally for me, for all your hard work, and doing an excellent job for the citizens of the town of Rising Sun.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Well deserved.
Thank you.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. So, with that, resolution 2021-06, elected and appointed official stipend?
Commissioner Warren.
I'm sorry?
Did you want to do that other presentation that I told you about?
Okay. I thought we were going to let them during the staff reports, but we can do it now, that's fine.
Whatever.
So, hey, Ryan and Scott, are you prepared to do your presentation now?
Yeah.
That's not the one I'm talking about.
What? Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's why I'm thinking, yes.
Okay.
So, I know people that write the news don't want to necessarily be part of the news, but in this case, we'd like to recognize, actually, the mayor has asked us to recognize Jane Belmeyer for her 19 years of service with the Cecil Wig, and we would like to present you with a coin.
And by the way, he'll give you his psychiatrist's number.
Yes. Sorry. Okay. So, I guess with that, we'll go into the resolution, and then we'll get to the Ryan and Scott at the staff reports.
Yes.
Okay.
So, let me just share my screen here. All right. So, what you have before you is a resolution that at the July 13th town meeting, we made some ordinance changes that would allow us to compensate members of the planning commission and Board of Zoning Appeals and any other boards that were appointed by the elected body to be compensated or a stipend provided to them for the time that they have to put forward and serving on these boards. In addition, this board has been operating under a stipend scenario that is a couple of years old now, and the job of the elected official in many respects has changed, especially with all the things that are happening in the town of Rising Sun. I can tell you, as town administrator, I know that many of you folks put several hours in a week, you know, at these jobs, and you do not get compensated for mileage. We have two members of our board that serve on the Board of Directors with MML, and when they make those trips to Annapolis or down to Ocean City, they're doing that on their own time and at their own expense, taking personal days off of work, whatever, to be able to do that. And so, as provided for in the town charter and the town code, elected officials are permitted to receive a stipend to offset the expenses as being an elected official. So, all wrapped up into one resolution here tonight is changes to the stipend provided to the elected body, plus a new stipend for the planning commission members, the Board of Zoning Appeals members, the election board, and the Board of Ethics. For a second, let me back up and give you a quick update on the election board. Historically, at least when I say historically, in the 14 years I've been here, the election board has always been compensated for the day that they spend here during the election, but it's never really been documented how that happens. There was never anything in the charter or the town code more or less sort of clarifying that. So, we're wrapping that up into this resolution also to set aside that. Now, in addition to that, because of the reporting guidelines from the state and the town trying to leave behind its, some of the issues that happened, you know, decades ago in terms of ethics and integrity, the town created an ethics board about 10 years ago. And on a regular basis, the ethics board meets a couple of times a year because part of the integrity that was built into the town's system is financial disclosure forms of most of the staff and all of the elected officials to make sure that there are, if there are any conflicts of interest where someone has some type of connection with a business or an entity, it doesn't mean they can't participate, it just means they have to disclose that potential conflict. And so, the board that looks at those financial disclosure forms every year is the ethics board, and they meet several times to work out some of the details and get those forms where they need to be for transparency. In addition, during the election, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we had some concerns about people running for office who actually didn't live in the town of Rising Sun. And so, we had to make a lot of changes to bring integrity to the election and candidate process. So, as a result, there's now a process that has to be done to ensure that someone is a resident of the community. There's a series of criteria that has to be met. That determination is made by the election board. So, that's another meeting in addition to being in the polling or in town hall in the polling process. In addition to doing that, they are also the ones to meet and look at the candidate applications to make sure that whoever's running for office is a verified candidate and eligible to run. The ethics board has another responsibility. In addition to the financial disclosure forms, we also have a campaign finance policy, very similar to what happens on the state and federal level. And basically, what that aims to do is to make sure that there isn't, quite frankly, somebody with a whole lot of money with the motivation to try to effectuate an outcome in town government that they can buy. And they can buy that by making significant campaign contributions to a candidate to give them the exposure, advertisement, commercials, signs, whatever. And so, under the campaign finance policy, a candidate has to accurately track and disclose where they are getting any contributions from and how that money's being used. It's exactly the same as what's required on county elected positions, state, and even federal elected positions. The ethics board is the one who reviews that. So, during the election year, and again, we have our elections every two years, during an election year, the ethics board can meet six or seven times for a couple of hours at a time to go over those campaign forms. So, the idea here is that in this sort of new age of town government and meeting the needs of the community, we, you know, try to fill our boards with good people, and we want to at least make sure that they're not spending more money to serve on these boards than what is justified. So, the ethics board is in this ordinance resolution to be able to receive a stipend for their meetings also. So, if the elected body is good with that, I can read the resolution into the minutes. Okay. Resolution 2021-06, a resolution titled "Stipend for Appointed and Elected Officials." The boilerplate, I'm going to skip that as we always do, go down to the third paragraph, whereas Chapter 9 titled "Finance, Taxation, Business, and Trade" of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Rising Sun, Article 10 titled "Compensation of the Mayor and Commissioners," Section 9-1001 titled "Compensation for the Mayor," and Section 9-1002 titled "Compensation for the Commissioners," establishes the concept of a stipend or compensation for the mayor and commissioners. This stipend or compensation is to be set by resolution of the mayor and commissioners. And whereas the increase of a stipend or compensation of an elected official is not permitted to take effect during any term of an elected official currently serving at the time of the adoption. And whereas the demands of the commitment are ever increasing with the cost of travel and other expenses being borne by the elected official, and in many cases have far outpaced the current stipend of $275 per quarter that is currently in place for each elected official. And whereas the mayor and commissioners wish to make an adjustment to this compensation for the next group of elected officials coming into office. And whereas and furthermore, the mayor and commissioners recently passed ordinance 2021-03, which makes changes to allow the mayor and commissioners to compensate members of the planning commission and Board of Zoning Appeals or any other board appointments as created by the Board of Commissioners. And whereas the mayor and commissioners all wish to compensate members of the planning commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, Board of Elections, and members of the ethics board, therefore, be it enacted and resolved that the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun have set the annual stipend for the town's elected officials, planning commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, and members of the ethics board as follows. Section 1, having to do with the elected body, the mayor. The new stipend will be $125 per month commencing on November 9th and paid out as part of the employee payroll process from that point forward. Commissioners, $125 per month commencing on November 1st and paid out as part of the employee payroll process from that point forward. Special notes related to this. The above stipends will cover all mileage, meals, and incidentals related to one-day-and-night events, not to include tolls, which are reimbursable to the official upon submittal on the proper forms. This does not preclude the town from covering the costs of meals, mileage, and other incidentals that previously approved by the Board of Commissioners or part of a normally recognized training or seminar put forth by MML, Legit, or other state agencies. Note 2. It is understood that newly elected officials do not take office until swearing in at the first town meeting in November. However, new elected officials shall be paid for the orientation process leading up to that essentially. Therefore, these new stipend policies will take effect starting November 1st, 2021, for the mayor and two commissioners duly elected in October of 2021. The two remaining commissioners will be paid at the current rate of $275 per quarter and as part of the employee payroll process. However, the new rate of $125 per month will not take effect for those positions until after the 2023 election and upon taking the office at the first town meeting in November of that year. Note number 4. The amount of compensation is tied to the position and not the individual. So, any vacancies that might occur in any position shall not alter the timing of when the new policies take effect. Section 2, Planning Commission, PC, and Board of Zoning Appeals, BZA. Each member of the planning commission and zoning board of appeals shall be compensated at a rate of $30 for each official meeting as regulated by the Maryland Open Meetings Act, and regardless of the length of such meeting. To receive compensation, the member will have to be in attendance for at least 75% of the actual meeting, as reflected in the minutes for each meeting. Section 3, Ethics Board. Each member of the ethics board shall be compensated at a rate of $30 per each official meeting as regulated by the Maryland Open Meetings Act, and regardless of the length of such meeting. To receive compensation, the member will have to be in attendance for at least 75% of the actual meeting, as reflected in the minutes for each meeting. Section 4, the Election Board. Each member of the election board shall be compensated at a rate of $30 for each official meeting as regulated by the Maryland Open Meetings Act, and regardless of the length of such meeting. To receive compensation, the member will have to be in attendance for at least 75% of the actual meeting, as reflected in the minutes for each meeting. In addition, members of the election board will receive $150 each for the required attendance and oversight of the town's election process during election day. And be it further resolved that the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun passed, approved, and adopted this resolution on this 10th day of August 2021.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, yeah, I understand part of the charter. But let's look at something from a hypothetical standpoint. November, we have a brand-new mayor, and we have two brand-new commissioners. They're making more than the experienced, existing commissioners for two years.
Yeah, that's how it always works.
If I may answer the question, that is because you, those two commissioners, I'll leave names out, are not permitted to vote to change their stipend during the time that they are serving.
Okay. So, once you go through an election process, then, yeah. Unfortunately, that's the way it is. But it makes sense for, you know, people like voting themselves pay raises without citizens getting a chance to have their input.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay. So, let the record reflect that the vote was three to one. Okay. Calvin, are you ready to go into?
The next resolution, yeah. The next resolution is Resolution 2021-07, and that has to do with the appointment of a Board of Election Judges. We have an election coming up. We have an election board as covered in the town charter. That election board, the charter calls for three positions and one alternate, and they serve for two years, which basically coincides with the election process. So, this board, if approved, would serve until March of 2023. We always try to get these appointments made a little bit earlier, but in years past, we typically don't have candidates. The first thing they have to do is review candidates' forms. And typically, we don't have anybody announcing the candidacy until end of September. But technically, we are supposed to be making these appointments in March. But however, the people would serve until the alternates are selected. So, if you would like, I would read this resolution into the minutes. All right. So, I'll skip all the boilerplate at the beginning. Third section, whereas the town of Rising Sun charter contains Section C-6 titled "Board of Election Judges and Election Process," which establishes the creation of a Board of Election Judges made up of three members plus one alternate member, who will also two-year terms. And whereas the Board of Election Judges shall oversee all town elections, ballot preparation, counting of ballots, and election verification. The Board of Election Judges shall decide all questions of registration of voters and the verification of candidate qualifications. And whereas the mayor and commissioners wish to fill these open positions on this board for the upcoming town election to be held on October 18th, 2021. Therefore, the mayor and commissioners wish to appoint the following persons to serve on the Board of Election Judges and to serve in this position until the second Tuesday of March, 2023. And Mr. Stephen Miller, Ms. Joanne Osborne, Ms. Bernice Fogel, and Ms. Sheila Moore. Mr. Miller and Ms. Osborne are veterans of this, they've done it before. Ms. Fogel and Ms. Sheila Moore are new. For the record, we did reach out to all past candidates, and they all declined to want to serve, so that's why we have two new members. Therefore, be it further resolved that the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun passed, approved, and adopted this resolution on the 10th day of August, 2021.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay. It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Does the record reflect four to zero?
The next one?
Introduce him.
Okay. The last resolution we have is Resolution 2021-08. It's the same concept. We have term limits, terms on our Board of Ethics, and we have two members that their terms have expired. One actually expired during the COVID pandemic, but since we really weren't doing anything because of COVID, it lapsed until this year. So, normally, you would have one appointment to be made, and this year, we're looking to make two. So, if you would like, I'll read that resolution. Skip the boilerplate, go down to the third section, whereas the Code of Ordinances of the town contains Chapter 2 titled "Administration and Government," which establishes the general guidelines associated with the proper administration of affairs and businesses for the town of Rising Sun, Maryland, according to the town charter and other applicable federal and state laws. And whereas this chapter contains Article 6 titled "Ethics Provisions," which establishes the town's ethics policies and the establishment of a three-member ethics board, and further establishes the membership, terms of appointment, removal, establishment of a chairperson, legal counsel, responsibilities, and authority removal from office. And whereas this section specifically calls for terms of appointment, and whereas the term of existing board members, Dave Fox and Charles Chip Slayball, have expired, and the mayor and commissioners wish to reappoint both individuals to the town's ethics board. Therefore, the mayor and commissioners wish to make the following reappointments to the town's ethics board as follows. A. Dave Fox shall be reappointed to the Board of Ethics and shall serve in this position until June 30th, 2024. Charles Chip Slayball shall be reappointed to the Board of Ethics and shall serve in this position until June 30th, 2023. Therefore, be it further resolved that the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun passed, approved, and adopted this resolution on this 10th day of August, 2021. And to clarify, we have a three-member board. The third member, Andrew Snyder, his term does not expire until 2022. If you notice, Mr. Slayball's term is only for two years. That's because he's the one who expired in 2020, and we want to maintain the staggering of terms. So, that's that clarification.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Record will reflect unanimous approval. Okay. Do we have any citizens' input tonight?
We have one resident who's on, Mr. Tom Goble. I'm not sure if Mr. Goble would like to speak. If you would, you can unmute your microphone, Tom.
No comment, just watching.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. We'll enter staff reports. Chief?
Okay. He'd like for Mr. Goble to check your mic. I don't think you mute it.
I muted it.
Okay.
Yep.
During the period of 7:27 through 8:10, the officers responded to approximately 120 calls for service. Most notable during that time period were two arrests for possession with the intent to distribute meth. And ironically, we just celebrated the promotion of Billy Townsend. Both of those arrests were made by him, a three-year officer out making a difference in a community. Beyond that, we did not have any other trends. Nothing really stood out during that time period. And that is basically all I have for a report. Unless there's questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Ms. Milton?
Yes, sir. From administrative perspective, we have been working on making sure that all of their bases are touched on the election. We do have the registration information to the Cecil Wig to run on 9-1 and 9-8 to notify people to be sure and register to vote. We also have been looking at upcoming community events. We have been working on our fall event as well as looking at long-term for our winter event. We are working with a company to look at what we consider more COVID-safe entertainment for this fall event. We'll, with more to come on that, we have opened the vendor applications. We have already had one vendor apply. There seems to be interest- had one vendor apply. There seems to be interest already, even though we haven't started promoting it very much. We did get our first deposit for real estate debt service. We got $570,000, which was $11,300 more than this time of the same, the same deposit in last year. So other than still, like I said, working on things like that, we're good. Our intern went back to her permanent job, so we don't have that intern service anymore. We're going to miss that. Other than that, everything else is good. We did handle 115 calls from July 1st, I mean, August 1st to August 10th, primarily being driven by water and then also code, some general communication. So that's all that I have right now. I will do financials in our next meeting.
Okay. Thank you for your update. Town administrator?
Yeah, the only thing I'd want to add to the office manager's report, the intern took a job at Christiana Hospital, but she did leave us a first aid kit, so we're covered. So, the only two things that I have is just to, you know, try to keep everybody in the loop as much as possible. We are getting a lot of development interest. A good portion of my time now is meeting with, you know, the developers at Commissioner Pearson and Commissioner Wardick, who have been here a long time. The names, you know, Montgomery, Don Stevens, Knutson. There's a lot of interest to finally move forward with some of these projects. The interesting thing is that the Town of Rising Sun, and I know this makes Commissioner Pearson and Commissioner Wardick very happy, because all your years on the planning commission, you guys were just chopping at the bit to re, to see the town handle the land development process in a manner that better suits the town in the end result. And we are finally getting a chance to do that. It is ruffling some feathers, as you can imagine, because there are those who, who at times believe that development is solely for the benefit of the developer, let's say, and not the town's people itself. So we, we are, we are enforcing policies and processes that are not making some of them very happy. So there's a lot of interest going on. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention, without naming areas, because I think it's unfair to do it, there are some areas of development in our community that are really starting to get run down. And I'm not talking about street repaving and stuff like that. I'm generally talking about the condition of the properties. As Judy can tell you, a good portion of our calls anymore are just people just at their wits' end with what their neighbors are doing. We are getting a handful of people that are, I guess, maybe because of COVID, have thought that they could just do work without a permit. We are slowly catching up to that. The one thing that I, I would advise people in the listening audience to realize is that, you know, having to get building permits is not a matter of just providing money for the Town of Rising Sun. The Town of Rising Sun basically breaks even on providing that service. The real reason why there's a requirement to get these building permits is because most of your building codes, quite frankly, are driven by insurance companies that have had to pay the claims out on injuries and loss of life and loss of property, loss of property value. So these codes are put in place to maintain the value of your property, but also to maintain the value of your neighbors, too. Furthermore, I often hear this, that people, when there are certain code requirements that are geared towards children, especially barriers around a fence, I often hear people say, well, I shouldn't have to comply with this because I don't have any kids. Well, that might be, but maybe your adult children are going to have kids in the near future, and they will be visiting, and they can fall in the pool, or they can get hurt, or your neighbor's kids can go through an unlocked, improper gate and fall into your pool. And I think we just had one in Hartford County about two weeks ago, where a kid was found floating in a pool. It's one of those things that, when the code is not followed and the devastating event happens, there's no turning back from that. It happens, and the horse is out of the barn. So I want people to realize that we always work with people. There's more than one way to comply with the code. But if you don't comply with the code, you're taking a lot of risk. Furthermore, when you do, anyone who has sold a property or a house knows that anymore, the buyer wants, you know, a third-party inspector to come in. Those inspectors will more often than not check to see if building codes have been, if building permits have been applied for, for decks and additions and so forth. And we get phone calls about that. And the last, but not least, is your insurance company. We all have homeowner's insurance for different things, whether it's liability of somebody falling or tripping or falling in your pool. The insurance company will follow up to find out if a building permit was secured. And if not, it can jeopardize your insurance company feeling obligated to cover your claim. So building permits are not something that's just germane to the Town of Rising Sun. They're generally accepted throughout this country, actually throughout the, you know, the whole world in terms of, you know, you need them. So I just want to remind people, this is not a money-making thing. And you doing work without a permit, you might be getting away with something now, but the end result can really be something that you're going to regret having to live with, you know, down the road, because it will come back to you either in not having insurance, being sued, somebody getting hurt. So I just want people to keep that in mind. It is important to get proper building permits for the work that you are doing. That's one issue we're having, but also just the general upkeep of a lot of properties is just really getting bad in some areas. And there are some areas now where we're not talking about old developments, which inherently can have upkeep problems. We're talking about developments that are only 20, 25 years of age, and the houses are starting to look like they're really old. Now, with that said, I'm a firm believer, and sometimes life gets in the way of the best intentions of a property owner. And this is not a statement saying that somebody's a bad property owner because their property gets run down. It's a statement of saying, reach out for help. Even the Town of Rising Sun, it's not uncommon for us to marry people that have a need for something with people who are able to solve it. You know, we, we often jump in to try to help people, you know, to solve some property maintenance issues. So this is not a statement of our brain to hammer down on people that are not keeping up with their property. It's a statement of, if you're struggling, reach out for help. There's all kinds of different organizations that can help you. And most of the property maintenance issues in this town, in my experience, having done this for so long, can be solved with a pair of gloves, a rake, a shovel, and a trash can. Most of those property issues can be resolved. And if you need help doing that, reach out to us, or we'll be more than happy to steer somebody in the right direction. Because remember, when the value of your property declines, the value of your neighbor's property declines, and I've said this a million times, the house is the poker chip for many people in this community. This is how they get the home equity loan, to marry off their kids, to put an addition, to have a child, to experience things they want to experience is based upon the equity of their house. And if you don't maintain the equity of your house, you lose a lot of financial leverage in that. So please, just reach out to us if you're having a problem. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Town Administrator. Mr. Flickinger?
Good evening, everyone. Scott Koenig is going to take lead on KCI's update tonight. We have Scott on the call as well. Hey, Scott, are you, are you available? You're on mute as of now.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Scott Koenig. I'm a senior project manager for KTI Technologies, and I work out of the land development and municipal engineering division. Can everybody hear me?
Yes. Yes.
The KTI was engaged by the town manager to specifically address the 2021 road restoration project, which is essentially a concrete rehabilitation and paving project that addresses concerns on, for this project, five different streets in the original project documents. The first street was Louise Court, where there were some previous pavings done, there was a water main break, and then damage from the water main break, and a new water main was installed. So this season, we did some milling, we did some repaving of the damaged section, and we repaved over where the water main was constructed new. The only item that's left right now is the striping of parking spaces in the area where we replaced the pavement. That work was completed last week. We expect the painting to be done either late this week or early next week. At the same time, their concrete crews are working on Turtleback Court from the intersection of the crossroad, I believe in the eastwardly direction.
Modernly.
The, the concrete contractor has been progressing through that. Expect that work to be done probably by the end of next week on Turtleback Court. Then they will move the concrete contractor down to Mason Run Lane to address all the curb, sidewalk, and concrete issues associated with the pavement section from Pearl Street to the crossroad area. We expect that work to take probably another two weeks or so. From there, the concrete contractor is intending to move to Pearl Street. Originally, we had a longer length of Pearl Street from, I want to say, it's like, address 502 up the hill to several of the crossstreets. But the town manager has been working on a grant for water main replacement. So right now, tentatively, we're going to go up the hill and stop just short of the entrances into the elementary school, so that we can get a determination as to whether we got the grant or not. If we get the grant, I assume that we will progress quickly into the design of the water main, and then the, the paving of that section will be delayed until probably next season. But we have talked to the town manager about dressing, specifically potholes or really bad failing pavement sections if we need to on a temporary basis. The last location on the current program is Mount Street. This street is also the subject of a grant application for, I believe, water main replacement. If we do get the, the grant, we're going to delay that, that road section and do some temporary patching if we are authorized by the town manager to do that. The contract gives a fairly wide latitude to the town manager to add and delete, so these changes don't change the unit quantities. And if we do do the actual deletions, we're going to work with the town manager to add some additional paving to get up to the expected contract value. Once all the, once all the concrete work is done, the paving contractor will mobilize and, and, and pick, mill and pave in the same sequence that we did concrete work. So the expectation is, is that the con, the entire program will be done by mid-October, and everything will be cleaned up before the colder weather sets in. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Koenig, for your report. Ryan, is there anything else you wanted to add, or?
Thank you.
I don't have anything else tonight.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Flickinger. And so, town attorney Jay Gallo.
Good evening, everyone. Everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good. We've been working on a lot of the projects you know about behind the scenes, Southern States Project and Steering Committee. I believe we're going to have another meeting coming up to talk about some directions, and then that will be brought out to you. We're still trying to finalize the tax issue with the county on the Main Street property. It appears that everybody is in agreement. It's just the fact that the numbers have not been transmitted. So we're going to work on that and get that out of the way as soon as we possibly can. And I've been working with the town administrator to finalize and get ready for some financial closeouts. So nothing major new to report, but hopefully in the next month or so, we'll have a lot of conclusions from the things I've been working on. And I can answer any questions you have.
Hey, Jay, a couple of questions. One, I assume that we can't really do anything on that property until the 15th, move forward on the legal side of it anyway, because of the governor's moratorium, correct?
Right. Even if we did get the tax certifications, couldn't file anything till after the closing.
Okay.
And that may actually be even longer, depending on whether or not they're mortgage holders, and you know there are, and if the mortgage holders were backed by the US government, which they are more than likely that way, we may be affected by any federal mandates that come down. But the process can't restart until the 15th, no matter what.
Got you. Okay, and the, the second thing, given the expiration of the, you know, the governor's orders, are we in a situation where we've got, like, right now, we're still kind of a hybrid meeting, but I know at some point, we have to return to state law and the Open Meetings Act and such. Are we, are we going to get to a point where, for people to speak, for example, they have to attend the meet? I know we can continue to livestream the meetings, but people will have to come back in to speak.
You're going to be able to come up with that. I know the town administrator has talked about that and kind of put it off. There's, there's a couple of aspects you need to think about. Think about it first from your perspective of members. Normally, there's a forum requirement, and forum means those present in the meeting. So you need to have a certain number of members, three, to be present. Right now, before COVID, before Zoom, present and being there didn't mean being on the phone. So we may need to change our forum requirement to say you can be present virtually. Well, is virtually just seeing the person, or is virtually a phone? So we need to clarify that. Again, all within your purview to do. And if there's a forum, if you're counting your members as being there via a forum, then they're going to be allowed to vote as well. So that's your side of the table. Go to the public side of the table. Almost every jurisdiction I represent is still going to be doing the live streaming. As you just said, there's, there's, it's, they've already got the infrastructure. Citizens are already watching it live. They like that. So there's no question about that. But most of them have gone back to, if you want to speak, you need to come in person.
Yeah, that's, that's the part I was wondering about.
Yeah, that comes back to, it's not necessarily a constitutional way to cross-examination, but it's akin to that. So that if somebody is in front of you, you can ask them questions and get back and forth with them, and they can be questioned. So that's really how they're opening up, and they're making that almost mandatory across the state for things like VZA hearings and things like that, so that there can be cross-examination. So I think that you're going to be addressing that at some point in time. Every town will, because we're in a new age and we need our big rules to act.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
If I might, one of the, one of the things I missed in my report is, I think I talked about it at the last meeting, we do have a planning commission meeting coming up on Monday, August 23rd, to hear an application for a variance request, and then the Board of Appeals will meet on Thursday, the 26th. And this is a request for an encroachment in the front yard of about a foot and a half down in Valley View, which is, to some degree, similar to pass, a pass variance it was granted down there. Basically, they have a patio out front, and they want to put a roof over top of it. As soon as you do that, you're basically creating a structure. And it's attached to the house, so it's a primary structure, and it can't be any closer than 25 feet to the property line. So that's, that's why they need a variance with the additional one and a half feet.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have anything else?
No.
Okay. With that, moving on to the commissioners' reports. Commissioner Braun?
I don't have a report.
Commissioner Pearson?
No, nothing.
Commissioner Shepard?
I have a report.
The only thing I have tonight is, you know, I think the ground's getting close to dry enough now that, like, it, it was really saturated when. to dry enough now that, like, it was really saturated when the damage was first occurred down at the dog park, so we should be able to hopefully get down there here soon and start working on that. I know you and I talked about going down there, meeting on that, but last time, I had something come up, the, oh, the weather, actually, the rain the following night, and I didn't think that was a good idea to go down there in an already really muddy area and try and tour it. But upcoming meetings, August twenty-fourth is the next town meeting, followed by September fourteenth and twenty-eighth and October twelfth. The town elections will be on Monday, October twelfth, at two thousand and twenty-one, at polls open eight a.m. to eight p.m. I believe the filing deadline, Calvin, what's the?
It's the eighteenth.
The eighteenth of September?
October.
Eighteenth of October.
You said the twelfth.
Did I say the twelfth? I meant the eighteenth. I'm sorry. I was still on the town meeting, I guess, when I read that. And the eighteenth of September is the filing deadline?
Yes.
Is that a?
That is a Saturday.
A Saturday, so really, is it the seventeenth? The seventeenth at five p.m.?
Five, six p.m.
Six p.m., okay.
We're open late that day.
Okay. Spooktacular will be on Saturday, October twenty-third, at, from eleven to five p.m., eleven a.m. to five p.m., not eleven p.m. to five a.m. or anything, that would be crazy. And then the next upcoming holiday, town hall be closed, is Labor Day, which is September sixth. Just a reminder, trash and yard waste recycling, and yard waste will be collected every Monday pending any weather-related issues. We move to Tuesday if the town holiday falls on a Monday, so Labor Day falls, I believe, on a Monday, and therefore, yard waste would be September seventh, that, that week. Trash and recycling will be picked up on Fridays. However, the next holiday that's affected, that affects the trash and recycling is Thanksgiving. So Labor Day does not impact the schedule for that, so make sure you have your trash out Thursday night for that week. Is there?
Or Judy, can we please put that in the?
The water bill.
The water bill?
Yes.
Yes, so we don't get?
We always do.
We'll still get, you know.
Yeah.
Numerous requests about that, but is there anything else that anyone would like to bring up tonight? Okay. Well, with that?
Make a motion.
Yeah, we have motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay. With that, meeting is adjourned.